Good evening. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission, January 22nd meeting of 2025. Our first meeting of the new year. Happy New Year to everybody, and thank you for attending. If you're attending online, and thank you all for sharing. And the first thing I'd like to do is call the, roll call, please. I would like to call one. Please start with Rachel. Say your name and tell us if you're here or not.
Rachel Larson Weaver, I am here.
Larry Brown, and I'm here.
I'm Mary Sue Grisman, and I appear to be here.
I'm Christopher Smith, and I'm here.
I'm here.
I'd like to do before we, I'd like to first introduce Smith, and he's sitting over. Oh, I would like to welcome you, and please give us a little introduction about who you are and why you want to serve, and who you hold for this planning commission.
Sure. I've been part of the community now for about seven, seven years. Moved in, we live right up off of 13th Street. Love the community. Before this, we, we lived in North Beach. I got two little kids, 10 and eight. So just, I think a big part of being part of the planning zoning is something that I can be involved with within my community and look forward to, I guess, making small, small changes and, and being part of a, a community that we've grown to love. Appreciate it, yeah.
Ugly more of a, sorry, am I not even on? I'm not even on, but you can all hear me because I project, so that's all good up there. So, she will hear me, she can hear me. But I, anyway, I just wanted to thank him for all the future wonderful things that you're going to be doing for this commission, and we appreciate your, your wanting to serve. That's really an important thing for all of us. So, and the other thing that I appreciate is the fact that we've got commissioners from all parts of the community, of all parts of this town. We've got the north represented, we've got the south represented, because Larry, Larry Brown over here represents, I would say, the south side. You are on the south side of the town, in my opinion. And then we've got Mr. Chris Smith, who is on the north side.
I think you're over your north.
I'm sorry, you're south, you're north, you're south, and you're Bayside, and you're Richfield Station.
I think I'm, you're in Bayview, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's not Bayview, husband, it's not Bayside.
Okay, Bayview, you're in Bayview, okay. We'll get, we'll get all this straightened out, but we all are in different areas of the community, and that's what's important. And I think that's what makes this, this commission really valuable, is that we're all coming at it from different perspectives and different aspects of, of, you know, the different communities. That's what we need here in this commission. And we have to thank our wonderful council member out there, Kathleen Burt, who's attending for our first committee, first meeting of the year, and we thank her for attending. But she is the one who recommended Chris Smith, and we thank her for doing that. And since we've, we've now don't have her up here, we have to, you know, have to make do with other people, but that's okay.
No offense, no offense.
Anyway, anyway, thanks a lot, Chris, for stepping up to the plate here. We do appreciate it. Okay, so as we look down our agenda, I'm going to go to number three, approval of the January 22nd Planning Commission Agenda. Are there any issues or concerns? Do I have a second to approve the agenda? We have a second. Any concerns? Do I hear a vote to approve?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Number four, approval of the minutes of November 20th, 2024. Do I have a second to approve? We have a second. Any questions or issues? I should say, no, no issues, but I can't even remember what November is all about. Do we remember after December was passed over? Okay, do I have any issues about November 20th minutes? No. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I don't hear any ayes on that one. Number four, we're, number five, we're going to reschedule the November, December 2025 meeting dates due to the holidays. Is there anybody that has any issues with changing these dates to the November 19th, December 17th meetings dates? Do we have any issues with that?
Not at this time.
Okay. Anybody else have any issues or concerns? Do I have a motion to approve? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We don't need to second that, that's just a, a housekeeping issue. Okay, now we're going to have public comment on any agenda on the end. Anybody have any comments on the item on the agenda? I thought we had a comment. Okay, there we go.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Burt, 7409 B Street in beautiful downtown Chesapeake Beach. And I just want to congratulate Chris for joining. I also want to thank Cindy for accepting the chairmanship of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as Larry for being the vice chair. You're very near and dear to my heart, and I, I know you will do great, great things, and I look forward to them ahead. And I thank you for all your support, and I wish you, I've seen the agenda, and I'm ready. And after you work on your signage, and I'll be looking forward to receiving it at Town Council. So as long as we get that, you know, I'm really big on that little floppy sign, so, but anyway.
The camera did not quite catch it. You need to go higher.
I'm getting ready for Saturday's, oh, I guess it's, is it Saturday's game, the Commanders versus Eagles? Sunday, where I will, I will probably lose half of my family as they're from Philadelphia, but we've got to take a stand. So thank you, and best of luck.
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. We appreciate you coming in today. Did you reflect the fact that we have, I was waiting for Commissioner Rutke to attend, but I guess she hasn't shown up, so you're going to go ahead and consider her absent at this point. I'm sorry, did I? We are, I just have a little bit of housecleaning here to do. I just want to make sure that, that when we try and do any kind of commenting or anything, try and bring it back to the chair instead of asking our poor, our poor planner here all these questions at one time, because we're going to have, with signage, we've got a lot of questions and a lot of issues coming up, so if you can bring it back to the chair, and then I will direct all the questions to Planner Franklin, I would appreciate it. It'll help in smoothing things out a little bit as far as getting comments to her. The one thing that I want to bring up with signage is that I'm a real strong proponent of a strong signage ordinance. I have already worked on one signage ordinance before in another town. It took us, I think, about nine or 10 months to complete it. It, it entails, it entails a lot of detail. We have to specify a lot of different things that are, a lot of details that, that we don't think about right now, but we will when we start working on it. So the one thing that I really want to make sure is that we have a well-written sign ordinance, and we remember three important, maybe four important things. The first thing is that when we come up with a sign ordinance, we have to think of public safety. That's my number one goal in a good sign ordinance, make sure that when we write something up, that we're thinking of the people in the town, and the tourists, and everybody that comes to this town. We have to remember that they are the ones that we, we have to be concerned about most. So when signage is, is on our minds, we think of visual clutter, we think of perhaps materials that aren't working, and they fly off in the, in the windstorm. We have to think of a lot of different things. So remember that when we are talking and discussing signage. Pedestrians, anybody walking along the streets, and they could be, you know, hit by different, you know, protruding signs, whatever. So signage is very important. Visual aesthetics, aesthetics. When we look at signs, we, we can have a feel for a town, whether it's charming, whether it's chaotic, whether the people love it, where there's a lot that, that goes into signage. When I drive down 260, and I see that beautiful sign that I think the town did on the right-hand side there, that's that, that little monument sign that they've done for the town of Chesapeake Beach, I really feel at home. I love that sign. I think it's beautifully done, charming. I love to see that, you know, that even the businesses kind of follow suit with, when they put up a sign, it's charming, it's related to the beach, or maybe historically related to our train, that the aspect that we had the train coming through here. There's a lot of history to this town, so anything that they can do historically would be wonderful. So I think visual aesthetics is important, as well as the public safety. And then, of course, we have to promote the businesses as well. We have to provide directions. We have to provide identification for the different venues, for the government venues that we have, the landmarks that we have. It's so important that we are conscientious about making sure that people can get from part, you know, part A to part B, and, and, and not have to crash into people on the way, you know, to that point. So I think that those are, are three things right there that I'm really concerned about, and that we are going to be, as, we're going to be a great team trying to work on this ordinance. We started already in November, but we had a month off in December, so we're kind of back, starting from square one in, in January now. And I'm hoping that in the next three months, we can kind of accomplish this ordinance and get it done, and get a, get a draft to the Town Council that is precise and organized, and, and, and very much effective for the town for the next decade. Whatever we produce today, or in the next few months, will be with this town for the next, at least decade, I would bet. So we have to use probably what we have and do a lot. I mean, I've been researching, I've got four towns that I've researched to try and figure out if we've got all the information that we need to have. And we have to compile all that, and then try and make sure that we have everything that we need to have in order to make that tie, that sign ordinance just as perfect as we can get it, as far as I'm concerned. Because it, the, the businesses are going to depend on it, and everybody in the town is going to, to make sure that we are abiding by all the rules that we need to have as far as, you know, being safe and complete and effective. So that's all that I would like to say about this, and the, and the next thing I would like to do then is get into a, perhaps some kind of a, a discussion that we can have with our town planner, Ms. Sarah. Have your, your.
I have this slideshow that I sent.
You have the slideshow available?
I have the slideshow, yep, and I have some side comparison.
I wasn't quite sure if it was going to be available.
Yeah, I'm going to pop up there.
Perfect, okay. Come on up, and let's go for it.
Can I just ask, when you said to have comments come to you, and then you would discuss them?
Please.
Do you mean today, or do you mean?
Today.
Today.
Okay, so when we go around and we complete what Ms. Franklin has as far as a slideshow or presentation, then I'm going to go back and ask for questions, and then we're going to come back and ask, and ask for more comments. So we'll, we'll complete the evening with a lot of information and a lot of suggestions and deliberation. But we're not going to make motions tonight. I don't want to have motions until we get through much of the sign ordinance. So we're just going to collaborate and try and deliberate as much as we can together tonight for a few, a few items down on the sign ordinance agenda. Okay, what have you got here, Ms. Franklin?
Okay, so, oh, I'm looking over here, but it's in both places. So this slideshow that I sent to everyone is kind of an analysis of some of the signs that exist in town today that are considered non-conforming. They don't have permits, and we kind of need to discuss how to handle them, and whether they should become part of the ordinance or not, and how to regulate all of that. So the moving ones have videos, so that video will, will go, and you'll be able to see. A lot of this is electronic signs, and with electronic signs, your biggest issues are like how bright they are, and how that motion is happening. Is there, how quickly are the different, like, see, we have the white letters here, then we move to a waving flag. Is that distracting? Typically, it's kind of thought to be distracting when there's more constant motion. And so that's one of our, our unregulated or unpermitted signs right now. But you can see they also are a pretty big investment for whoever put them in. So it's kind of a lot to say, let's just have them all removed, so we can talk about some solutions to that. Another category of currently non-permitted signs is some, some of them on here. Like, in the middle here, we have, I think this is the liquor store, and so they have just more signage than is permitted total area. So that signage is limited to your street frontage, and there's just a lot more here. But also, you know, antiques here, they have an open sign. That's actually not permitted. So you'll see a bunch of businesses here that are just sort of in violation for having a neon open sign. And so we may want to consider allowing that in the ordinance, because it is, is a really good visual way for folks to know whether something is open, and within limits, it doesn't have to be distracting. So this is, I tried to provide you with a lot of information, so this just talks about what the zoning is in that district, and then this talks about the violations that would exist.
Franklin, can you go over what the different districts are? And, you know, because we have two people here that are probably new to the idea of the different districts, so we need to understand those districts at the same time.
Okay, so you have residential districts, like where the American Legion is. So that's a low-density residential district. It's just supposed to be a pleasant living environment. So it says, you, these keep areas free from land uses that are incompatible, or might adversely impact single-family neighborhoods. So that's your low density. Then you start to get into your commercial district. Town commercial district is intended to provide locations for commercial uses that are harmonious in scale and impact with nearby residential neighborhoods, and to provide a safe and attractive environment for shopping. We talked a little about the violations, so we'll skip that. Bayside Road is a neighborhood commercial district. It provides locations for small-scale and low-impact commercial uses. The sign that is going with the video is actually permitted through a variance. There aren't any rules about how much of any of the flashing is, because there's nothing in the ordinance about it. And so that may be one of the factors that's causing people to feel distracted.
Can, if you go back to that particular sign, how tall of a sign monument is that?
I don't know how tall it is, but the height limitation for signs is 20 feet. And I have some pictures of size signs, like standing next to people at the end of the presentation.
Are any of these signs permitted?
The, one at the fire department, which is the one that is here, is permitted through variance procedure.
That's the only one of the ones here in your.
Yeah, they don't, just don't have, the signs were installed without permits.
Does anybody have any questions currently while we're talking to Ms. Franklin? Oh, I'm sorry. Rachel, do you have a question?
In response to what Larry was saying, are some of the signs, like when we're looking at that Lido sign, the Lido pizza sign is allowed, it's just the open sign.
It's the open sign, so, yeah, so this identifies.
I wanted to like specify that, that it's not all of the signs that we're looking at, but in each of these businesses, there's some example.
Right.
Of, okay.
Correct, so, so for example here, this shows the volunteer fire department has this flashing sign, but it is permitted through variance. It's just not allowed through the existing ordinance, and so we're talking about changing that ordinance, so we should consider that. Then we have the Twin Beaches convenience store just has a lot more signage than is permitted, and they have the neon. When you go to Lido's, it's just, it's just the neon. And so I, it is my advice to y'all to allow a certain size sign for open and closed that's neon. But, but.
Lido pizza sign, how many square feet is that?
I don't have the square footage of the actual, oh.
I would bet it exceeds what was in the ordinance before.
I think so, it might.
Would that be considered a roof that it's on, or is that a, what would that be?
I think, so that's not really defined necessarily in the sign ordinance. The way, the way the ordinance is written, it doesn't matter how it's attached, if it, it goes above the roof that you start to have the regulations apply. I mean, I, I think that's, it's interesting, because this roof is, its angle and its pitch is steeper, so it's almost like frontage instead of a roof. So that might need to be addressed.
So on the, the Twin Beaches Chesapeake store, it's the paper signs to the left and to the right of the regular signage that is not permitted?
The paper signs and the window signs.
And the window signs, except, and the neon sign, the little neon sign, but.
Right.
We're going to be looking at the neon, opening, open and close, or open whatever sign, okay, good.
Under the draft ordinance, one thing it says, if sign is not permitted when the ordinance is passed, that you can apply for an ordinance or a permit, and you'll be permitted. Are you saying all of these would be permitted under that?
So I worked with the town attorney to draft that language, because my understanding at the last time we spoke was that everyone would like a way to allow what's existing, regardless of what you decide to do moving forward. So I wanted to have that there. I think there needs to be some guidelines around it, because if you have these unpermitted electronic signs, you think you can say, okay, you can keep your sign, but it has to, you know, change less frequently. You can't have scrolling, you can't have constant motion, and that's how you allow people to have their electronic sign, but mitigate these distracting elements.
I think Commissioner Brown was referring to more than just the flashing signs, though, correct?
Oh, sure.
You're referring to all signage.
Okay.
For permit, that will permit them. So under the draft, that would, they would be permitted to continue.
Yes, you, that's, that's a good point. So we might want to consider putting some rails around that, such as like if, depending on the permanency of the sign, right? So you might want to let Lido Pizza, or Firehouse isn't a good example, because theirs is permitted, but let's pretend it wasn't, that you want to let, might want to let them continue, but maybe you want the convenience store to take down some of those signs. So, and those signs aren't a huge investment, right? They're under $100 or a couple hundred dollars each, and they change them frequently.
But you would have to be consistent with everyone, so the rules that we apply to one would apply to everybody else, too.
Right, so we might want to make changes to the draft based on your input, which is what we want to do.
Yes. Commissioner Grisman, go ahead.
I was just wondering about franchises, and Lido's, I know, is, I think, a Maryland corporation, not very big, but I do know that with certain, like large, like if there was still a subway, let's say. You know, that there are certain signs, I believe, that, you know, when you enter into a franchise agreement, you're required. And I was wondering if there's going to be anything that would accommodate, I, I don't know, but to me, that would be, could be a problem within the ordinance, you just, I mean, it's an issue, potential issue, for if someone comes in and needs to have a sign, and I think we need to think about how that interacts with the modifications that we want to make.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, and part of the discussion that we need to have, you know, you guys need to have today, so that, what the draft I provided you today was based on kind of the comments from November restructuring. There's very little actually added or modified to it. So the discussion tonight would be my guide for what kind of changes and new language to draft. So that's.
I just want to bring that, that's all.
That's, it's a good point, because it.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Yes. Commissioner Hahn.
Just out of curiosity, we have Section 508 on documents and things like that. Is there any requirement relating to that for signs?
Relating to what kind of signs?
Section 508, where the visibility, it has to be, like, when you're looking at webpages and you're looking at documents for those that have sometimes challenges for reading, there is, there are requirements that it has to meet these, the, the specifications of the regulations for Section 508, if it's going to be disseminated and put out. But usually, I mean, and it even falls for the federal government. So I'm wondering, as county, for signs, if there's anything that it potentially has to fall under.
There's not really anything for that. So one of the big things about signage is that you can't regulate the content of the sign. So the kind of rule of thumb with that is, if you have to read the sign to permit it, probably your regulations could be in violation of the Supreme Court ruling on content.
Again, if you have to.
You have to actually read the content of the sign to decide if you can permit it or not. It could be in violation of the Supreme Court ruling on signage content.
I saw something in here, though, about, you know, nothing obscene, or profane, or something else, and I'm, you know.
So I actually ran, I ran that through the lawyer, and she said that that would still hold up in court right now.
I think we're talking about content neutrality.
Yes.
And that's a very important Supreme Court decision, where we have to keep as fair and equal and neutral as possible when it comes to content and signage, to the point where you can just look at a symbol or look at a sign and know, hey, that's where I'm going to go, or that's what I'm going to do, or whatever. And that's the only way to be cognizant of, is that content neutrality issue. So that's important. But going back to Commissioner Hahn, I noticed that there were some issues now with, you know, the QR codes and this kind of a thing. But those are going to be small, little signs. I mean, little, you know, probably exempt signs, signage. So in other words, if you had a, well, let's just say, hearing problem, or if you had a, you know, any kind of a disability, and you were using your phone, you would be able to use those signage issues. You know, they'd have little, little tiny things on windows or doors or whatever that you could, you could use, right? That would not, that would be exempt. So what she's referring to is something that would be exempt. But you could still have them on your windows or doors that, that people could use to. But you could still have them on your windows or doors that, that people could use to, to flash onto a QR code or whatever. Is that, is that right? Am I not right?
I think, yes, but I think part of her question may have also had to do with the signs themselves. And I think probably like highway signs and directional signs that governments install might have more regulations than actually commercial.
Thinking of like the ADA, kind of like being in compliance with American disabilities and things like that. That's what you're referencing.
Yeah, that's what you're talking about. Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, ADA issues. But I don't think ADA issues are going to be, are going to apply here. They're not going to be applied here at all.
They're not an issue with the sign.
An issue here. Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Franklin.
So this, I would say, is sort of your most visually cluttered sort of area with signs right next to here. We've got a couple right next to each other. But I think, oh, we get that to go again. A lot of it is just managing the flashing, the frequency of changing, and that can be less distracting in these locations. Like this, this one, that's a terrible picture, but. What's the name of this? Tyler's, thank you. You know, this is only on at night. I don't know how distracting it is, but a brightness limitation, which we can talk about, would address any concerns from that. And over here in front of, you know, our last section here, in front of the Citco, you have only one of these signs is actually permitted through the ordinance, and there's two. So that is why that's up there. And then, and this is the town commercial district.
Well, what's the issue on the center one?
Traders?
Previous spot.
Oh. Oh, it's just that it's an illuminated sign. So no illuminated signs are allowed per the current ordinance. So just any illuminated sign is not allowed.
Of that collage there of.
Sorry, it's, yeah, it's very, it's just this, can you see, yes, just this sign right here for Tyler's, has a little arrow that lights up at night. And that's.
I'm sorry, Ms. Franklin, is that considered a sandwich board? Or what is that kind of sign called that you, that has the K1 carrot?
So that would fall under a frame sign?
That's called an A, that would be considered an A frame, even though it's not an A frame.
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Okay, so that's considered an A frame. So anything that would be portable and, but not necessarily an A frame is considered A frame. Okay, that's, I got a little confused about that.
There's a portable sign section.
There is a portable sign section we have to go through. That's true.
And A frames are covered in that.
And going back to the Citco slash Traders sign there, I think the other, the other concern is that they're, I mean, they're obviously going to be grandfathered and whatnot, but they're tall signs, you know, so they're, so the problem is that it's a lot of clutter at one height, it seems like. But you've also got a lot of lighting digits. You've got letters flashing at Traders. You've got, so the clutter is complicated. You've got a lot of different things going on at one time. Are, are any of them permitted, or what's going on with the permitting there, or do we know?
My understanding is that the sign for the fire department is permitted. I don't know that every one of these locations was looked up to check their permitting status. The only one I am aware of having permit is the fire department.
Oh, so you don't have a file of permits for sign?
So staff has permit files, but they would have to look up each address to find whether the signs were permitted. And they did for a number of them, but not for all of the ones that are here.
Oh, okay. So some of these may be permitted, some of these are not.
Right.
Computer days probably before we entered everything into computers, or what, what happened?
Well, it's just, it's a, it's a big task. I sent the list, but I don't, you know, as far as pulling all of these permits, part of it is we checked on some permits. And instead of having staff pull up these permits, I think it makes sense for us to have a discussion about what we, what you want to allow, right? Before staff spends a few hours pull, going through and trying to pull all the files. So Madam Clerk just remembered. She has a lot of institutional knowledge, so she was able to provide that information about the fire department.
Questions about these pictures at all?
So we have two signs over here. And I think that the Rod and Real sign shows a really good example of how timing and lack of flashing can make an electronic sign less sort of distracting. And I don't know what, you know, we can count and see how many seconds this is, and you can actually regulate how many seconds to slow this down if this is found to be distracting. But I think that shows what you can achieve on all the other signs through regulating the hold times. And then the other one is that there is this rooftop sign. And that, I have not seen it lit up at night, but I've heard that it's very, very bright at night. And so that's like a brightness regulation. But the other issue with this sign is that it projects more than 14 inches above the roof line. So.
That permitted?
No.
And that's supposedly a holiday sign as well, that.
So I don't know the details. But I think whether it's permitted to project above or not, because there are some other height projections that regulating brightness and regulating hold times on the signs and how they kind of scroll through can help to address a lot of the concerns that everyone has. So even like rollins, you guys probably don't even think about the fact that that's an illuminated sign, but it is.
The, the signs are all on that commercial center, are those considered rooftop signs or not?
Oh, we're back to the, the angle of the roof.
I'm talking about the, the, I'm talking where McDonald's is and.
That whole, where CVS and all that is.
Whole commercial center. I thought that was a roof and those were signs on a roof. They don't allow rooftops. I was, I don't know, I was confused about that. Yes.
I thought she was saying that it's not, it can't be above the roof, but those signs, aren't they kind of like the Twin Beach where it's like an angle and they don't go above the roof line?
It's, it's, it's not supposed to be a rooftop sign though, and this is where it gets confusing.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not supposed to have rooftop signs, but that's almost like a awning or a parapet. I don't know what you would call that design of that frontage of that building, but it's not really a roof, I think, because the roof is probably more flat, isn't it?
Yeah, so I think if, sort of the direction and agreement is that at a certain angle, right? It no longer appears to be a roof that we're projecting above. And I can research what that angle of slope is, and we can put that into the ordinance as part of either definition or in the permissions.
So those signs are extended out by a structure, a frame. Have we measured, are those in compliance to the original sign ordinance? They seem like they project out quite far, but I don't know if we've actually measured.
Yeah, I haven't climbed any rooftops.
I'm just curious because they seem to, you know.
Right.
Use a lot of framing to try and project those. Okay, well, we'll get to that, but is that the conclusion of your?
Oh, no, you got. There's the one more. We know this one's not permitted. We checked. But it is school. A lot of areas actually exempt school signs in the same way that you might exempt the fire department and the school if you decide to add exemptions into the ordinance. Then we have, so these two are actually in a residential area, which makes the, the amount of signage on that top one a little more noticeable. And I don't know, I haven't actually been through this other, by this other one at night, whether it actually illuminates or not and is distracting in the residential area. You guys probably know that better than I do.
Isn't distracting. It's a very low light.
It's not distracting. Would you consider the bath, the shower to be part signage?
So it's not signage by definition of the existing ordinance because signage has to have words on it.
Okay, so it can't be just a feature. It's got to have signs on it. It's got to have digits or numbers or letters on it or something.
Right. It's, that almost is more of kind of a code. But, well, this is code compliance, but a different kind of code.
Okay, so I, because they're using that as signage in a way, I mean, in the display of, of what they have. But I was just curious if you can call that a sign or not. So that would be in violation for different reasons. One would be the materials used, correct? Or are the material, so we're talking about the top one right now. What would be the codes there that would be in violation?
It's just the area of the signs.
Okay, it's not.
The total area of the sign.
It's not the material.
No.
Because the material is like, it's not, it's like a vinyl or some kind of, so that's allowed as a permanent signage is vinyl?
It is not regulated.
Okay, okay. Okay, so it's just the, the amount of length of signage that we have that's a violation?
Total square footage.
And that was not to, that was not something that could.
No.
You know of.
They may be viewing them as temporary signs. But I imagine they've been there for longer than the.
They have been there a while. So the one on Tangled, it seems to me that that structure has been there for a long time, but they just changed the name. So when they came, when they changed the name, they were supposed to come to you or come to somebody and get a new permit for the new signage, when they changed their name.
But I think the fact that that does light up, but it doesn't, everyone thinks it's a reasonable level of light indicates how regulating the level of light can actually keep the signs from being a problem overall in the ordinance.
So in the neighborhood, that's, okay, the, that was in the neighborhood or the, what do you call that district? The neighborhood commercial district.
That's in neighborhood.
That's the NC. Is that lighted sign compatible with that district? Or have, what is, what's the current code? I don't. Be permissible at this point or?
It's a commercial district, so other than the fact that it is internally illuminated, it would be permitted.
Okay.
No internally illuminated signs are permitted at all under your zoning argument.
Entire town, even in the marine commercial district?
Yeah, nothing.
Okay.
No internally illuminated signs are allowed, which is why all of these aren't compliant. But I think that it's possible to address the concerns and allow this type of thing, which might remove the need for grandfathering language that you see. So.
Do you know why, because it seems to me that some, oh, is it because it's residential that you can't have the illumination? Even though it's commercial, but it's, because a lot of other signs, whether it's flashing, whether it's neon or something else, why is there a delineation?
There, there isn't a delineation, why internally lit?
Yeah.
So I actually think my memory goes back far enough to remember Chris discussing this. And a different Chris. And was my understanding that the feeling at the time that that was initially established was that all of the internal illumination was very new, was very overwhelming, and people just did not want a bunch of neon signs and all of that around. I think the environment has changed around that. And I think the ability to regulate while allowing certain things has become more sophisticated because that's, we're talking like 16 years ago.
One, one of the challenges that we created is these four commercial zones. Little one up here, big one in the maritime, one along Route 260. And by inserting these, I'll say, commercial zones into a neighborhood, you now have a conflict between the lighted sign and the neighborhood. Whereas if you, if we had combined the commercial zone into one large area in the middle of town, it might not have been a problem. He decided to have four commercial zones.
Yeah, and I don't think it's necessarily, I don't think it has to be a hazard. I don't think it has to be incompatible with residential areas. I do think, you know, no one wants an illuminated sign in an actual neighborhood, except for maybe at Christmas, right? So I think there's a way to do this that works for everyone. And it's just about regulating, the biggest thing is regulating how bright they can be.
Well, you take the American Legion post sign out here, which is a low-density residential area. It's so low, there's almost nobody there. Cares. Whereas some of the other areas, people across the street are.
Well, I think it goes back to, you know, back in the day, people were offended by light pollution. And when we built the parking lot over here, we were concerned about the lighting on top of that top tier of the parking garage spilling over. Because it did, you know, we weren't used to it, and it was light pollution, and it offended a lot of people. But you get used to it. And you get used to the low level at Tangled as well. You get, you know, you get used to things and it's not bothersome. But I think when you see flashing bright LEDs or, you know, that kind of thing, it can be distracting and you can notice the difference or the changes in the brightness of the lighting. So I think, again, those are things we have to be cognizant of when we come back and start, you know, detailing out our, our code is how, how bright do we want these? Is there a measurement to determine how bright Tangled is as opposed to how bright, let's say, you know, the, the sign here at Rod and Real, which I think is brighter? You know, I mean, we have to figure out how do we determine what the brightness is?
Right. And so there are guidelines for that. So if you want to incorporate it in, I will add them for next time, and I will provide you with a similar slideshow I had a time that lets you take a look at all that.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
You mentioned Christmas and there's, that's okay. You mentioned Christmas, you mentioned how bright some of the signs are and the flashing lights. So it's not signs, but we put up decorations that are very bright, brighter than a lot, some of these signs that do it, and they're flashing, and it's distracting when you're driving. Don't get me wrong, I love them. They're, they're great, they're Christmas. But they're not a sign, but they are a decoration. They're larger than these signs. Would they potentially fall under this, under those regulations?
So they don't because they're not signs. So this only is regulating signs, which are things with words on them. I believe that any signs that, you know, anything with words on it, that's what up at Christmas time, would probably fall under temporary or could fall under an exemption. I don't know that zoning codes typically, I've never heard of them dealing with Christmas lights.
Because, I mean, some of them are bigger than six feet or whatever the requirements are. I mean, and, and they're motion and they move. So I'm just curious. I don't think, I don't recall if one says ho, ho, ho on it or not.
You mean the town's lovely decorations?
I'm just saying, right? If we're going to do this, we need to look at everything. And we also have signs as the town of Chesapeake Beach, and where do they fall in? the town of Chesapeake Beach, and where do they fall in, and the things that we do, are we following the same guidelines and regulations that we will enforce?
That's what we have the next few months to deal with, is exactly those issues. And we will have an exempt section of this, of this uh, uh, code as well, so that might fall under exempt, so we'll have to determine if that will or not, but that's a good point. Um, oh, well, now what have you got here? I mean, yes, I'm sorry, we have another question.
Yes, it was just sort of a comment for the record, because we were talking about light pollution and how we get used to it. But I do just think it's important, because it's not about aesthetics or the safety, but light pollution also has like environmental consequences, and so it doesn't matter if we get used to them. There's a lot of, there's a lot of detriment to having access, excess light for animals, for migratory things, so to like, keep that as it's not just like how we enjoy or appreciate it or get used to it.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment.
Um, so that's one more thing we have to think about. These are all great comments that we're having to uh, keep cognizant of, because they're gonna come back when we have to really delineate it in our code. So what do we got up here then? We've got a man and some candles.
I thought you might like to look at this man. No, I just, um, I just wanted to provide some images that show you sort of sign size and have a comparison point. We can, I can go sit down and we can keep talking about the non-compliance, and I can come back up and we can talk about this.
Are you tired of standing?
No, I can, I, I don't mind standing.
What on sign, I guess I need better.
It's twelve by eighteen.
And then we have the eighteen by twenty-four and the twenty-four by thirty-six. Uh, and then we have a two by, is that six or eight?
Two by six and three by eights.
And a three by eight.
Have more slides with people and signs.
Okay, so the yard signs are the one. Now, are the yard signs also the same as real estate signs slash uh, political signs? Um.
Yes.
Are they all encompassers of that yard sign idea?
Yes, um, these are just like size comparisons, not necessarily saying we would call them yard signs or banner signs specifically. But real estate signs can actually be bigger than that. Um, sometimes they're larger than that final one there. Um, see if I can, these, this was a neon guide, but we've got guys with all types of signs. Trying to find the, yes, you can have real estate ones that are bigger, like this thirty-six by forty-eight, or even a forty-eight by forty-eight sometimes.
Uh, forty-eight by forty-eight.
I've seen some like bigger ones when you have like a new development, even bigger than that, yeah.
Talking new development.
Yeah.
Construction, yeah, right.
Some of those can be even taller.
Right, right. But in a regular for sale sign, we're talking more of the eighteen by twenty-four or the.
Yeah.
Right, we're talking about more like the eighteen by twenty-four. Um, the banner signs would be, uh, but you could also have a two by, a two by six or a two, I mean, you could have.
Oh, yeah, you can have anything in between all of these. These are just sort of, just to give you guys a sense of scale, not necessarily to tie in any specific sizes.
Right, okay. Uh, thank you. Any other questions uh, for Ms. Franklin?
Want me to take the presenting?
Uh, yeah, I think probably you can um, go back to your seat, and we might want to refer back to those sign pictures at some, or the uh, sizes at some point. And maybe we'll have to hook up there so nobody gets. Um, by, by the way, one thing I did want to note is that uh, you had a promotion as, as of the last council meeting, and I happened to attend the last council meeting, so I got to see you actually receive your new promotion, which is zoning administrator for the town of Chesapeake Beach. So yay, Ms. Franklin! Another new role, and what does that entail? Tell us exactly what that means.
Um, well, thank you. Uh, and it means that I will be signing the permits now, um, instead of just reviewing them. There will be other people that need to review them, because I am not an engineer, um, or a public works director, but I will sign them.
So you have specific office hours then, just to review and to have people come in and discuss the, you know, what does that mean exactly?
So we have discussed um, having office hours when I would actually be here, but we have not settled any of that. Um, I know there's a lot of other things that are high priorities um, for new administration and staff. So I believe that will be coming. I just don't have an answer today.
Well, I wanted to congratulate you, and I did want to share that I was at the last town council meeting where I introduced all of you, even though you weren't there. I shared everybody's name, and I let them all know that you are part of the planning commission, and I was grateful to have you on here. And I did share that perhaps we're gonna get to your agenda item. So, um, yeah, I think they're all very, um, very excited to have us complete our signage and uh, you know, I think it looks like a, a town council that's ready to really get down to work, so I was really pleased to be able to. And of course, I'm grateful that we have two um, former planning commissioners. We have not only commissioner, uh, former Commissioner Brought, but we have former Commissioner Blackwalder who's on town council as well, so we have to congratulate both of them for uh, getting onto the town council. It's not an easy thing to, to win a fight like that, but they got it, and we're so proud of them. Um, anyway, continuing on to the signage, um, I'm sorry to interrupt on that. Um.
I have plenty of time to debate.
Waiting for her next fight on the town council.
To you.
I know, I know. She's just, you know, waiting for that next election, you know, she's all prepared. Um. Okay, so let's start, um, if you, if you will, let's go to, oh, there's one more signage clutter issue, and maybe it's just me, but did you ever, this one over here on Thirty Street, does that ever, did you ever see this one before?
Can I come up and see it?
Yeah, yeah, I, I thought that, that one kind of bothers me. It's got like a lot of different things on one corner. Yeah, you know what I'm referring to there? So that's another issue where we can pass, just pass it up and down. It's something I took a picture of, but it's on the corner of, um.
It's like across from the fire department.
Across from the um, when the twin beaches, um, uh, pivot and, you know, all that little shopping plaza right there by the fire department. It's that.
High Horizons, yeah.
Horizons, thank you. I couldn't think of Horizons at all. I couldn't think of that town, that uh, condo development at all. But anyway, too much signage in one corner where it's not effective signage, and it just seems like that would be another place that we would wanna look at as far as possibly changing that up. Um. Okay, so let's go to where we kind of left off, and that is at the beginning.
Chris, pull up, man.
The most important thing that we need to do is go back to the purpose, and um, we have the, a, a little bit of a change in the purpose, and I think I even added something to that purpose. Did ever, anybody get that? Did they receive that change perhaps? I just wanted to add to that, if you go back to fun, I put function and purpose, I don't know, you don't have to, this is my idea. Does anybody have this? Does everybody have what I maybe, no, you didn't get this, any of this?
I think so.
Okay, so what I did was I basically just added um, a few things to it. So if you go to, I think we had it as purpose. You have it as purpose. I'm, I added function and purpose, but we can just leave it as purpose. But what I wanted to uh, add to it is, uh, on the second or third line, where it says additionally, signs contribute to the physical environment, and as, I put aesthetics of public and private spaces in the town of Chesapeake Beach. I wanted to add and private spaces, because I felt that there were a lot of um, signs on private spaces we also had to address, so I wanted to include that in the uh, in the purpose. So I don't know if anybody, do you have your computer hooked up to the, you don't have your computer hooked up to that, do you?
So the, the issue why I was standing up there instead of sitting here is that the, there's a cable here, but it is not connecting to the projector, so the only way.
That's right, okay, I'm sorry.
I can come stand there. I don't mind standing.
Okay, so does everybody have their purpose in front of them? They have the purpose.
Just to verify this is.
Let me just go back and say, let's, let's just read the whole thing out, and let's just see if anybody wants to add anything more.
Just to reiterate, it's the draft where it says discussion one ten.
Yes, you're, yes, you're on the very first page of the um, draft sign ordinance update. It's on page one. We go to page one, uh, under two ninety dash twenty-two signs, purpose, very first page. Signs perform an important function in communication, identification, and promotion of properties, businesses, services, residences, events, and other matters of interest to the public. Additionally, signs contribute to the physical environment and aesthetics of publics. And I, and I, this is where I added mine, public and private spaces. So I added an S to aesthetic, I added, so I made it aesthetics, and I changed it to of public and private spaces in the town of Chesapeake Beach. And then if you keep going further, the purpose of this section is to ensure fair and consistent regulation of signage in the town of Chesapeake Beach. Now, this is where um, there, okay, I, okay, this is what I'd like to also make a change if possible. I've also included, and you can of course say no to this, it also prohibits signage that may create a physical harm, visual clutter, or confusion to pedestrians and motorists, and will therefore protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. So basically what I did is I took that last section and kind of um, um, tweaked it so that it would be at the, it would be more about the um, prohibiting what we don't want, which is a physical ha- hazard. And then it would, of course, protect the health, et cetera. So let me read that again so that you can go over it one more time as, where it says so that they are, and then there's a, a strikeout. You see how we striked out appropriate for their use? Instead of that, I said, a period at the end of Chesapeake Beach. So you see where it says the town of Chesapeake Beach, period. So that um, the purpose of the section is to ensure fair and consistent regulation of signs in the town of Chesapeake Beach, period. And then I started out, the purpose of this section is to ensure fair and consistent regulation of signage in the town of Chesapeake Beach. It also prohibits signage that may create a physical harm, visual clutter, or confusion to pedestrians and motorists, and will therefore protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. And then I would, if you permit me, I would like to take out the part that says no sign shall be erected, hung, placed, or painted in any district except as herein provided, because I don't feel like that should be part of the purpose. I think the purpose should be uplift, I, I think it should be somewhat uh, precise as far as what we expect to accomplish, and I'm not so sure that no sign shall be erected, hung, or placed, et cetera. I don't think that last sentence really belongs there. Uh, but I'm, I want to hear from all of you, because um, this is a, this is an important part of the uh, introduction of this ordinance, and we need to, to acknowledge if we want to have have it changed around, or do you want to leave it the way exactly it is? I mean, we can certainly do it that way as well.
Can you explain to me what your idea of visual clutter is? What is that definition? Because I believe that is all up to interpretation.
Visual clutter, and if you go through all the others, you know, all the other towns that have, you know, identified what visual clutter is. Visual clutter is when you have so much, so many signs in one small area that people are distracted by it. So visual clutter is when you have a tall sign here, a small sign here, you have a flashing sign here, you have, you know, you have just too much going on at one time, and you create a distraction. That's what visual clutter is. And it's pretty much what everybody in all the towns I've looked at have talked about as a problem, and that's what their goal is, to eliminate visual clutter. Again, if you don't like the term visual clutter, we can, you know, take it out.
I don't, I don't have a problem. I just think we need to make sure that there's a definition in there, because if anybody raises it, then we have it defined.
Uh, let me go back to um, Planner Franklin. What do you think about the term visual clutter?
I think it's, I, I think it's kind of hard to define. I think if you put it in the, the purpose, right? It's more loosey-goosey. You're not necessarily like, sorry, I shouldn't have said that. You're not, you're not, the purpose isn't actually the.
To see, okay, go.
The purpose isn't actually the regulations, right? It's the purpose.
Right.
So then the regulations themselves are preventing what you deem visual clutter, right? By not allowing multiple A-frames or limiting the amount of signage on a space. So the reason you can't have four signs is because that was deemed to be a problem for health, safety, welfare, and visual clutter.
So, okay, so then, okay, so visual clutter in the introduction would probably be too vague of a term is what you're saying.
But I think it's okay to be vague in the introduction, because you're talking about health, safety, and welfare. So how, those are the reasons that you have the regulations. And so the regulations are crafted in a way to achieve that purpose. You don't actually have to define in the ordinance what is visual clutter for what you just showed us, right, of the signage that looks like visual clutter to you. If this is what everyone says, you know, this is visual clutter, so now we're talking about a certain number of freestanding spot, signs within a certain square feet, we don't want to permit, because we've deemed that's visual clutter. We don't want to permit your whole building to be covered in signs, because it's a visual clutter. Um, you don't define what the health, safety, and welfare is. You can, you could put it in there without necessarily um, having to define it, because it's not the regulation, it's the why.
The, okay, and go, it, it's a good point, uh, Commissioner Hahn, I appreciate that. The reason why I changed it is because I didn't like the fact, I didn't like the idea of using the word protective of the public. I didn't like in this where it said, uh, so that they are protective of the public health, safety, and general welfare, because it doesn't seem like signs are necessarily protective. We're protective, but I didn't think signs would be cons, do you see what I'm saying? It says so they are, so when you're saying the signs in the town of Chesapeake Beach, so that they are protective of the public health, safety, and general welfare.
It's just worth the promote, in that they promote.
Uh, okay, we could change the term to be promote. Okay, promote would probably be a little more precise, I guess, for me than protective. Uh, I like that actually better. So, okay, if we kept exactly what was written here and just say promote, what do you think about changing it to promote?
I think it's fine.
You think that would be a term that would, would be, okay.
Yeah.
So if we change protective to promote, does anybody else have an issue with the word protective? That, that's what threw me off a little bit, was that.
You gotta take out the word of too, in my estimation.
And R.
Yeah, promote the public health, safety, and general. I think that probably is saying pretty much what I wanted to say, but I didn't just think of one word, I thought of a whole sentence. Okay, that.
You're right, that's my, my business.
Thank you. That, that's your business, so thank you. I appreciate that.
No, a lot more.
So let me go back and reread it then. So signs perform an important function in communication, identification, and promotion of properties, businesses, services, residences, events, and other matters of interest to the public. Additionally, signs contribute to the physical environment and aesthetics. Do we want aesthetics or aesthetic?
It's a, it's with the S.
You think it's with the S, aesthetics?
Yeah. I Googled it, because I wasn't sure.
What did you think? What did you think?
Because I thought.
With the S?
Yeah.
The S as well. Aesthetics of public spaces. Do we want to include private too? Do we want to include private too? What do you think about that?
So I think that we should at, we, we can, you can put it in, but I would run it through legal, because I'm not sure that you're allowed. I mean, you're not allowed to regulate private space, but you are regulating signs on private, it gets a little squiffy, and so I would just want to ask them, but we can do that towards the end and strike it if it needs to.
Because, okay, well, we're regulating signs on business property, on private property, right? So don't we want to include it?
But that is public, if it's outward facing for us, that is public then. So I think we don't need to say private, because private would be what's happening in, in the building. It's kind of like how, you know, nudity at windows and stuff works. I don't know why that seems like the appropriate analogy to do.
I was going, okay, I didn't want to.
Well, because that's because you're supposed to be naked in your house, but you can't be at the window, because then that's becoming a public.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
And so your sign, if it's in the window facing out, it becomes public.
So long about this, doesn't she?
Thank you for that, neighbors. No, just joking.
Yeah. That, I appreciate that. Okay. So, go, go, go ahead.
Okay. I apologize, this might seem like much to do about nothing. However, there's something about the first sentence that I do not like. I think it should say, so, it's really just changing the tense. Signs perform important functions in that they communicate, identify, and promote. Because there's something about, it's an important function in communication. That sounds like communication services. It doesn't, it's the incorrect.
I, 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 I'm feeling it too. That's why I've been trying to figure out how to write. So thank you, Wordsmith. Let's go. Our other Wordsmith is sitting out there in the audience, so I'm having a problem here, because now I need you to help me, Wordsmith here. So, so you're saying signs perform an important.
Function.
Okay, important.
In, in that they.
In that they.
And then it's just the present tense of all of those. Communicate.
Okay, present tense. Okay, again, communicate.
Identify. And promote.
I think that does.
Properties, you get rid of the of, yeah.
Does make a lot, it feels better now, okay. And promote. Additionally, signs contribute to the physical environment and aesthetics of public spaces in the town of Chesapeake Beach. Period. And now we go down to, the purpose of this section is to ensure fair and consistent regulation of signs in the town of Chesapeake Beach. So that they are.
That they promote.
Oh, I'm sorry. So that they promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. Period. This section seeks to eliminate.
You need that.
Wait a minute, hold on. No, no, wait a minute, hold on.
You could just end with that.
I'm thinking we should end with that. Well, no, I don't know about that. I'm not sure about that. Because isn't what we're trying to do is, okay, now she's got the word clutter down here, and confusion, and hazard. I think this is a justification of protecting the health, safety, and general welfare. I mean, this was in the original code. Correct?
Right, so that, well, the purpose is new. The way, what you, you guys have yours in color. Is it blue?
Yes.
Sorry, say again?
So I wanted to know if it was blue. So anything that is blue is new. The reason you have lowercase in here is what I'm trying to do is let you track your own changes.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So all the lowercase in blue up here is what we looked at last time, and the uppercases and strike throughs are the changes we made to the text last time.
Thank you.
Is that helpful or more confusing?
Okay. Trying to do two months' worth of work in here. I forgot. Okay, thank you for that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just, I mean, could it not just say that this section seeks to provide the public with clear and clear guidelines and regulations? Or something? I just, it, to very wordy. Yeah. I mean, I think you really, I think you could end where it says that, you know, we're trying to be fair and consistent so that, you know, we are promoting the health, safety, and general welfare, you know, with these provisions or something. And I think that, that we talk about i, i, in the sections themselves, I mean, I imagine that we reiterate a lot about seeking to eliminate signs and conflicts between signs and hazard, clutter, or confusion. I would imagine that that is mentioned throughout, I did read all of this, but I don't have it to memory. But a purpose, I, I don't know, I just, I don't want to.
I, I will say then, in four towns or five towns that I've looked at, including Annapolis, they do include in their purpose, and they usually line them out, one through five. They have a whole section where they just identify the different goals, and they usually put those in. They usually put in reducing the clutter, and they usually do that, but what are your thoughts about it? I'm, I mean, you would know the best on this one.
So the reason that all of them say the same thing is because they're all going off a model ordinance. So I think that you can eliminate that second to last sentence. The last sentence just needs to move. I don't think you need it to justify the purpose, because you have health, safety, and general welfare.
So it, so basically the hazard clutter and confusion is just a reiteration of the health, safety.
Or it's like a further delineation of it.
Exactly.
It could add some justification, but I don't know that it's necessarily needed.
And we don't like to have a lot of clutter in our ordinance either. We don't want visual clutter, we don't want word clutter. So I, I understand that as an appreciation. Anybody else have an idea or thought about? What do you think? Rachel, what do you think about that last couple sentences there? This section seeks to eliminate. What do you think about that?
I tend to be pretty minimal. I say, get rid of it. Especially because we're going to get into the details of all of it, and that's what is actual regulation.
Um, yeah. Get rid of that that sentence, but the la, very last sentence, no sign shall be erected, hung, placed, painted in any district except as herein after it must be to be pertinent.
In this location, though? In this location?
Yeah.
We can give it its own paragraph. You know how like sometimes.
I was going to say, we should give it its own paragraph. Put it in with applicability or some other, that should be really.
You could have one and two under function and.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too, is that we really need to highlight that one. So I would say, move that, keep it, but move it to another section. Um, what about you guys? What do you think?
I, I think we get rid of the section seeks to eliminate signs, et cetera. And I like the idea, I think it's important where it says, no sign shall be, but I think that it should be in a separate area, because it's not really tracking with everything above it.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
Um, no, yeah, I, sorry. I agree, you can eliminate that sentence. It already states the purpose of everything. You could even put in a, if we're including that, the section seeks to unify signs and the conflicts that signs, I don't know if that would help. And if that's something that we plan on doing as far as like, I know we're eliminating signs, but we're coming to a, you know, we have, like, and we want a standard, right?
So where are you, where are you at that you're talking about unify?
Uh, this section seeks to unify signs and conflicts between signs that may create hazards, clutter, and confusions.
Oh.
I don't know if that. It does say eliminate.
This section seeks to eliminate.
It was suggesting unify.
I was suggesting unify, yeah. But, throw that out.
Well, and I also, even though I, we've talked before about wanting to consider design standards, but I feel like that becomes a whole nother beast.
Commissioner Hahn, what are your thoughts?
I say eliminate this, this sentence. This section seeks to eliminate signs.
Okay. And then put the no sign shall be erected into another section. Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we want them to actually read what we're creating, and the longer it is, I think we will lose their attention.
Okay. Yeah, when I look at some of these other I've even got Annapolis here, if you can believe it. But if you look at some of the other goals, they're, they're pretty long, but again, we've talked about this before. When you make an ordinance, make it so that it's readable to everybody and concise, and I think we've done pretty much that. Madam Clark, have you been able to go along and, and and fine tune what we've just talked about? I, I figure you have. You've figured it all out. So if we go back and reread it, can we do it one more time? And let me just make sure that I've got it in here as well. So signs perform a function. An important, okay, an important function. We can't forget important function. In that they communicate.
No, I thought it was signs perform an important function as to, wait a minute, now I forget, so, phew.
You said in that they communicate.
In that they, yeah.
In that they communicate, identify, and promote properties, businesses, services, residences, events, and other matters of interest to the public. Additionally, signs contribute to the physical environment and aesthetics, with an S, of public spaces in the town of Chesapeake Beach. The purpose of this section is to ensure fair and consistent regulation of signs in the town of Chesapeake Beach so that they promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. And I think that's where we stop, right? And we stop right there. Does everybody agree that that sounds concise, but it entails everything that we want to do as far as going forward? Do we all agree there? I don't want to do a motion, but I want to all deliberate.
I agree.
I don't know how you're doing on that. You got that all written down? Okay, going, uh, is there anything else we want to add to that section? Or are you good with it right now? You're okay with that?
I think it's good.
Yeah. Section B is a curious thing to me. Do we need to have section B in there, the word interpretation? I have not seen it in any other town. I, I'm curious as to whether it's pertinent, or if it's just more clutter, word clutter.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know why it is there necessarily.
I know, it's theoretically, but.
Oh, no, no, I'm just saying it's.
I mean, I don't, yeah, it's there. So it's there because it means if Lido's takes down that sign, right? And cleans it, and then puts it back up.
Right.
They're re-affixing it. So, like, say we gave, say we went with the language that's in here now, instead of regulating electronic signs. Then we give them a permit for their sign. They take it down. Now they cannot put it back up. Because they're re-affixing it.
It seems silly, but that's what courtrooms are made of a lot of times. So I, I see what you mean.
So it's there, there might be a different way to do it. But it's how you're doing it right now. So it, it could definitely be just incorporated, probably. But I didn't, I didn't change anything other than switching stuff around and adding the stuff we talked about last time.
Right, right. Um, okay, I mean, I'm okay if you all think it's the right place for it to be, and if you think we need to have it.
I have to think about the right place, but I do think that it, it's, it's kind of like a comfort order that you get from court sometimes, where it's like, we all know, of course, if you're taking it down to wash it, you can put it back, but if it's not written, someone could say, no, you now need to get a new permit. I think it's just, it's like one of those adamant abundance of caution to protect people.
I mean, because depending on what type of sign is, and they take it down to wash it, it might not, not just be down a day. It could be down a week or a month.
But have we included all the words we need to include there as well? I mean, I, I mean, okay, well, I did this, but it's not written right. It's not one of these words, so I get a freebie. I mean, do we then, you know, shoot ourselves in the foot by having this section and not being specific enough? Like, should we go to the source and actually get all the words that get me?
Or is, I mean, or the question, is there a different way to say this?
Yeah.
Without identifying each word? Is that something you guys want me to think about?
Okay, why don't we leave it there and then come back at the end of the day and say, hey, we may or may not need it, depending on how we frame the other parts of this. Maybe we should do it that way?
Possibly. Also, just for peace of mind, it's sign ordinance, so your attorneys are really going to need to look at it. So there will be.
We are just the first person who's looking at this. The attorneys are going to be next, of course. They're going, what is this all about? You didn't add this one word. I know how that works. So then, you then, if you go to page two, then you went and struck out all the rest of that.
Well, yeah, it's a little, things got a little wonky as I moved letters around, but the intent piece was in there in November. You guys decided to take it out in November, but it was, it's not in the original sign ordinance. That's why.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We were talking about purpose and intent. They're so similar.
Purpose and intent were, that's right, and she crossed that intent for that reason. Yeah, exactly. Okay, so then we'll move on to so we've got A, B, and now we've got C, and this is where it got a little confusing because of the lettering, whatnot.
And my word processor.
Right.
Changed.
Do you want to go ahead and explain C? And just go through C1 and C2?
Okay. So this says what you need a permit for and what you don't need a permit for. So the permits, so my word processor had the little I and II, the Roman numerals, as A and B, and then it changed them, so that read A as Roman numeral one, and B as Roman numeral two. And I'll have words with my word processor. I will probably lose that fight. So so you need a permit for any on-premises sign over four square feet. And any off-premises sign of any size. And then you do not need a permit if you're repainting or repapering a sign that is compliant. Oh, sorry.
I was going to say, that's, that might be where we put the, the part about the word interpretation. When you're talking about, it just seemed to me.
Yes. Well, so, so the reason the word interpretation is its own letter, instead of under another letter, is because then it applies to the whole section.
Right.
Got it.
Instead of permit requirements.
Okay, that makes absolute sense.
So basically I've tried to erase unnecessary words and consolidate things, so that it's a little easier, I find as a resident, when I'm reading my zoning, and I want to know something, that shorter sentences and more bullet points make it easier for me. So that is why I changed that. And then we'll go to, you don't need a permit if you're repainting, and you don't need a permit advertising, like change in programs, as long as the initial installation is permitted. So I don't know why, you guys have a theater? I don't think you guys have a theater, so I'm not really sure.
Confusing, because it also seems other, that would apply to things other than theaters, churches.
Yeah, so what I think this sign, I think this is a little bit of a older way to try to address potentially electronic or like frequently changing signs. So, you know, if you're a theater and you have a box sign and you put a different thing in it every week, you don't need a permit every time you put a different thing in it. But I, I think this might be able to be eliminated if you decide to create regulations around electronic signs, then we can just get rid of this.
Well, like the church down here on 260, they're changing their weekly sign, whatever.
Right.
We're not gonna like worry them about a permit, of course, but. Let's go back up to one, let's go back up to where it says permit requirements for signs. When you say all signs, do you want to exclude, you want to say anything about except for those that are exempt? Do you want to say, I mean, do we want to just say all signs of any size, or do we want to say except those that are exempt? As it says all signs, you, I mean, not the exempt signs, I mean, they're not included, right?
So. So this says all signs, yes, but you right now don't have exempt signs. So if you want to have exempt signs, then other areas will have to get wordsmithed. So if you direct me to create sign exemptions, then I will wordsmith everything else to make sure that it accommodates that. I'm not sure. I, I think that you wouldn't necessarily need to change this, because your exemptions are in a different category and they're exempt, so they don't have to comply.
Okay, okay.
But we can put it in if we do exemptions.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, please.
I guess I'm confused with the exemption part, but so any sign that's over four square feet, even if it's temporary, we're saying people would need, if you're like, if you're the liquor store and you put up a Bud Light sign, you need a permit for that, if it's over four square feet. And if so, is that something that's actually sustainable and enforceable?
And that's another good point.
So.
I mean, and what is it going to cost them with the beer change in sales or whatever? I mean, because like, if we use the one on 260, right, they had all the signs and they changed. I mean, and you need a permit for, what does a permit cost?
So then we're going to temporary signs, so it's a little different. Let's find, where did I move temporary signs?
Would seem confused, like, I just feel like when we were talking about how people come to read code, we don't read beginning to end generally. We're kind of just like trying to look and find the thing that is what we're looking for, and so.
I would say that all the towns that I've researched usually have an exempt page of signs, and they have a, usually a temporary, they have a whole section on just temporary signs. We've kind of merged, you know, merged it in with everything else, but I'm really for taking all of that out and delineating it so you can go right to the exempt signs, right to the temporary signage, right to the, maybe even the portable signage. So that we know, hey, I'm going to set up, uh, you know, a liquor store, I want to know what's, you know, and then they can just look right at the exempt, whatever. Merging it all with everything else, I gotta go through all, you know, even the sign, the code enforcer might have a little challenge. But I don't know, my thought is to take separate categories for those.
Right.
Because I sent you exempt ones.
You're right, and we can add exempt ones. So the way your code currently is, is it, so this section we're talking about right now is when you need a permit, when you don't need a permit, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Then, and, and this is fairly consistent, is you're going to have some general sign regulations that apply regardless of your zone, and then you want to have zone-specific regulations. I think I sent a table, you guys have a table?
Yes.
That table just has the current regulations, definitely need, would need to be modified, but the table is really an easier way to view what you have. But you can certainly, like, under, so if you go under general, we have prohibited, then we go to districts, then we go to general sign regulations. So that's where you see temporary signs. So number three is about signs including portable and temporary signs. Portable signs. All that is covered in general sign regulations. And maybe it's harder to find in there, right? Maybe with a way that, maybe it's still general signs, but each of these numbers starts with, like, the same way I is general sign regulations, maybe one is sign materials. And then you start into the item, and two is sign height. And then the text, so that it's a little easier for people to find what they're looking for. Is that addressing the concern?
I think so.
Okay, so C, permit requirements for signs. C1A, permit is required for signs meeting the requirements of the following two sentences. You have any on-premises sign over four square foot in order, square feet in order. And then the next one, any off-premises sign, except governmental signs of any size. So a permit is basically required for just about anything over four square feet in area. For on-premises and off-premises, pretty much any size. Or do we need to even delineate that, or can we just have one sentence that says the whole thing? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, why are we making it cumbersome? Is it cumbersome to everybody? What?
I'm thinking, I mean, if that's, if that's what this is saying, that.
That's all that's really sane, right?
So, yes, I just, I, I kind of liked how it was separated by on and off-premises signs.
You want to have it, okay.
Like, someone who's commercially saying, I'm going to attach this to my building versus I'm going to put this on a stand, they, it's a little easier for them to see, my love of bullet points is coming through. I don't know. You guys love bullet points, too.
Like, for like A, it should be on, you know, on-premises sign, colon. Any, and then have.
Right.
Just have it so that your I says, oh, this is.
Kind of like what?
Presentation of how it looks. If you did that, I think it's, it just helps you kind of order your mind with all of these, you know how it all descends from like the large A, then the small a, and then the little i?
Right.
It just helps your mind stay focused.
That's right. So, to me. A permit is required for signs meeting the requirements.
No, no, as follows.
No, just. Permit is required.
As follows.
As follows, yeah, I think that's where we get, we get a little cumbersome there. A permit is required as follows, and then put.
Bullet point if you want.
I think that is actually better for me, too. Put a colon, correct? Put a colon?
Well, I mean.
Permit is required as follows, colon?
Yes.
Yeah. A, because we've got one, or no, I'm sorry, you've got A is, I'm sorry, you've got one A.
Follow your convention, yes.
Then you've got, okay, one A, so I've got little I, okay, I see where you have the little one, okay. So C1A is, permit is required for.
As follows.
As follows, I'm sorry. That's right. Any on-premises sign over four square feet in area.
But it should say on, on-premises, on-premises sign, colon, and then put that sentence. That way, your I is drawn to that even more, saying, oh, this is exactly where I want to be. It's just a little bit about the presentation.
Yes, I agree. Okay, so, okay, let's, let's, let's see, I'm trying to. Sense.
We have an on-premises sign less than four square feet internal to, uh, colons. That sign.
It doesn't require.
If it's larger than four square feet internal to Roland, they have to get a permit.
Like inside the.
Inside the store.
That's private. Yeah, that's why we wanted to get rid of the word private from earlier.
Where does it say that?
Because we are saying that this is in public spaces. That was why when Cindy wanted to add in private, I said, I don't want to do that.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, I guess you could put any outward facing, I mean, if that would make.
Well, I mean, these are zoning requirements. They don't, building requirements applied at signs inside.
By definition, this doesn't.
Buildings.
Yeah.
The zoning can't really address things that are inside.
Okay, so we have one A. Permit is required as follows. Permit is required as follows, where should I my computer? Okay. Any, no, on-premises.
Right.
On-premises.
And that could be in bold and then just with a colon.
On-premises. On-premises sign over four square feet in area.
Where does it say that, uh, I can't have 10, 20, whatever, less than four square feet signs all around my building?
Later, when it talks about how much square footage you're allowed to cover.
And are we sure we want? That comes down the road here.
But that was what some of the things were in violation, like the liquor stores, both of them. But she referenced that, yeah.
I was talking to her. Was 1922 G1B? The old code, but I'm trying to find. Who was it?
We want, do you want off-premises sign except governmental or government signs? How do we want to word that? Except governmental sign? Government.
It's, I think governmental's correct.
Okay.
I think.
Okay.
Is that, is that right, Ms. Franklin?
I, I mean governmental is how it's usually said, but I, I mean, if you want it to be government, you can.
So I have one A. Permit is required as follows, on-premises colon over four square feet or more in area. And then B, off-premises sign, colon.
No, that's also on-premises. No, it's off, I wrote over it. I wrote over it, sorry.
Oh, I see. Any off-premises sign except governments, we don't even need the parentheses. We don't even need the parentheses. Off-premises sign except any governmental sign.
Yeah.
Except any governmental sign. Okay.
And the thing I would say is that under the first one, just, I would repeat just the full sentence as it is. In my, in, the way that it.
Close. Any, you mean any, any?
Yeah, so it's, so it would say, uh, on sign, premise.
Any on-premises signs.
Right, over four square feet in area. Yeah, I would just keep that sentence as written after you.
Okay, so it's basically just a redesign of that section, I think. We're talking about number one only, we haven't gotten to number two yet. So permit required, requirements for signs at the top, leave that. All signs of any size. That doesn't make any sense, though. Because we just said.
Over four.
Over four square, so that doesn't make any sense either. We've got to take out of any size, right?
So. Or we need to, so every sign.
Yes.
Has to comply with the ordinance. So say you have a, uh, sign that is three square feet and has offensive language, even though you didn't need a permit. No.
Yep, got it.
Okay, all right, yeah, sorry. All signs of any size must comply with all the regulations contained herein irrespective.
As, remember, it was.
I'm sorry, I'm still up on the top, I'm still up.
I'm so sorry, yes, okay.
All, all signs. Did I put a comma after signs of any, all signs, comma, of any size, comma?
Can we just say all size signs must comply and take out of any size?
Yeah, I mean, I think that makes it cleaner.
So all sized signs?
All signs.
Just all signs, it doesn't matter what, we can take out of any size, okay. All signs must comply with all the regulations contained herein irrespective of whether a permit is required.
Should be, should it be irrespective of whether or not a permit is required?
Uh, yes, it should be or not. Agreed or no? Anybody have a disagreement with that? It should be whether or not, irrespective of whether a permit is required or not. Yeah, you've got to have whether or not.
I, I'm adding as you go, as per usual.
Do you agree?
Irrespective.
I, I think the changes work, yes.
Okay, then we have one A. Permit is required as follows.
I think that A, is that not A, a permit?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I mean, I'm sorry, a permit, okay, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. I'm adding another letter in there. A permit is required as follows. Any on-premises sign over four square feet in area. A permit is required as follows, colon, correct?
Yes.
Any on-premises sign over four square feet or more. No, I'm sorry.
No, because over.
In area, in area, I'm sorry, in area. Okay. And then, so that would be little two, I, I, I guess, or you call it. Any off-premises sign.
It'd say of any size and then put behind it, except for governmental sign.
Oh.
Yeah.
And then it doesn't break up the flow.
And then you don't need to eat one beneath it.
Say that again, Kelly.
So just take except governmental sign and put that behind size. So it would read any off-premises sign of any size and then bracket except governmental sign.
Do we need to have of any size? So any off-premises sign.
Of any size.
Okay. Of any size. I wasn't going to include of any size, but okay.
Then.
Okay, so off-premises signs, colon, right? Trying to make it conform to the thing we did prior on the on-premises. So we have an on-premises and we have an off-premises. The on-premises sign has a colon over four square, square feet in area. The next one B is off-premises sign. Off, uh, let's see, any size except governmental, I'll see here.
Wouldn't it be B dot and then any sign, any off-premises sign, colon, and then it would be of any size because that would follow the over four square feet in area.
Okay.
And then you would have behind size, you would accept governmental sign. Does that work?
Have you figured that one out?
I, that's what I have written. Or that, I've been making your changes.
And I, I wonder if Sharon has been making similar changes. You're going to come together and go, okay, this is what they were talking about. Um. Good, I think that makes a little more sense. And then, of course, we deleted. Uh, the shall be erected, et cetera. Then we go down to number two. No permit is required for signs meeting the requirements of. And then what is, what is, what are we trying to say here?
Well, you would just say no permit is required for sign, it's at, first. Is, no, this does have two. As fol, uh, you want to say as follows to match up, no permit is required.
Okay, so no permit.
Is required as follows.
Okay.
Is required.
Colon.
For signs, for signs meeting the requirements, colon? No, or just leave it.
Well, that's, because the way you changed the one before is a permit is required as follows. So you would say no permit is required as follows, so that they.
As follows, okay. No permit is required as follows.
I have a question on that. Is there a reason why that's only limited to repainting or repapering? What about cleaning? I mean, I'm just.
What about repairing?
Yeah, and cleaning and, yeah. Well, they've got repair, oh, yeah.
So. I think this has to do with your non-conforming signs, right? So your non-conforming signs. Any not, any sign that's non-conforming before you adopt this is allowed to remain unless.
Uh huh, that's true.
They are repairing it.
That's true.
That, I think that's how the previous, that's, that's how this ordinance dealt with non-conforming signs. So how we choose to deal with non-conforming signs after the adoption of this ordinance maybe impacts that.
So do we want to add, do we want to say repainting, repapering? And or repairing? Do we want to include repairing or no?
Are you saying?
Changing a light bulb or doing.
So you can put like a percentage of. Value, there, there's different ways to, like, say when your repair is actually a new sign. So if you have a non-conforming sign that's been allowed, but once it's really past its lifetime, you can't keep it by saying you're repairing when you're really kind of replacing. And so that's, I think, why repairing isn't in here. But what we can do is if we kind of define what repairing is in the non-conforming section, we can say, or repairing compliant with two ninety dash twenty-two dash whatever section that winds up being in. That has to come after.
I, I'm missing where this relates to. These signs that I guess are going to be kind of grandfathered in. Where in that section? Tells me that that applies to those properties, those signs. How do I know to relate that to that?
So you don't need a permit. If you're repainting or repapering. If we add repairing.
I, I get all that, but so, so this doesn't, is not specific just to the, the non-compliant pre-enactment.
This is for everyone.
But you want to make sure that they don't take an inch, take a, a whole mile.
It's not take, it, it actually would make it so that if they repaired their sign, they don't need a permit.
Right.
So if you have a non-conforming sign and you repair it.
Okay.
You can, you can keep it. Um, so say you have a, a message board that's a problem or a height problem and you don't, your sign's past its lifetime, you don't want to meet the height requirements, so you just say you're repairing it.
Okay.
And then this kind of allows you to do that.
It ma, it makes sense.
We can definitely put it in, but we're going to have to back-reference some non-compliant.
Now that you said it that way, it just clicked.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
So to clarify. If another hurricane comes through.
Ooh.
Like we had in the early two thousands. And it affected quite a few businesses in the signs. And say these signs had to be repaired, like replace the part of the structure. Would that fall under here? I mean, if they already had original permit to put the sign up and they're just repairing it, whatever that may be, whether it's replacing the glass runt or something like that. How would that fall?
Yeah, so I think this comes back to needing to define. I think, I think the word is substantially repair and then provide a definition. Right? So it sounds like, you know, there's this balance between, we had a hurricane, we want to let you fix your sign without having to come to us for permission versus, I don't think anyone has a thirty-five foot sign, but you have a thirty-five foot sign and you want to just keep it twenty years from now. They're two different things, but they can both be addressed. But I think. I'm putting a note to. Add repairing to this section, but create a reference back to whatever non-conforming solution we come up with. Because I think writing the words requires the non-conforming solution. Before we can wordsmith this section.
Okay.
Does that work for the board?
Well, it's a little confusing, but, um. I'm just wondering if. We even want to have anything in there about the no permit is required for signs? Do we even want to have that in this location? We just want to have permit requirements for signs and just have what is required and then the no permit? Do we want to keep some of that for exempt signs or do we want to have it in another location? Uh, it just seems a little confusing. Well, what's?
I think without it right now, you're giving staff a lot of interpretation room, which can create confusion as to what's allowed and what's not allowed. Um, and I think it's better to have it in there for clarity. If you want to create an exempt section, I can look at trying to see if this can go into the exempt section and be eliminated from here.
Okay. Let's keep that right now. Let's go to number. Uh, two, 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 little two. Signs on theaters or churches, or, I'm sorry, signs on theaters, I put in or churches. Signs on theaters advertising changes in programs shall not require permits provided that the initial installation of the sign has been properly permitted. Um. What do you think about? Trying to move that to an exempted section?
So I think the no permit required could move to an exempt section.
But I mean, that particular part, that one section of the theaters and or churches, whatever you want to put in there, but.
Yeah.
To me, that is an exempt. Situation that should be in its own category of exemptions and people would just go, okay, I'm exempt, you know? This just seems a little wordy and a little bit confusing.
So. Just, do you guys want me to create a section for exemptions and put the material that's in C two into those exemptions for you to review and consider next time?
I would prefer it. I think everybody I've looked at has an exempt section and it's much cleaner. I say yes to the exemptions.
Okay, I will do that.
Yep.
And in fact, I think I sent you a whole list.
Yes.
You can work off of that. Um, and that can go into exemptions and it make it a lot easier for. Everybody. Um. Okay, so it's eight o'clock. It is time for us to wind this part down. Uh, I think we've, you see how long it takes to try and wordsmith all this, but it really is. It, it, I'm telling you, it took me a year in my last place, so I know it takes, takes forever to wordsmith this stuff out. Um. Okay, so we've got, yeah, we've got just that one little section. Any other questions before we tidy up this part? Can we just close it off? Yes, we have one question in the peanut gallery.
Well, and then, and, and this may not be, but I was worrying about, I was thinking about like the total area having signage and this, I may be way off, but you know how a lot of places will have signs, they take Visa, they take different credit cards, they take whatever. And, you know, it's affixed to the glass door. Is that, is that going to, I don't even know if that's something, I may be off base, but it just kind of.
I, I was looking at, that shows up later that we'll be talking about it because there is something that talks about blocking light in windows. And I was like, that feels like a very hard, I already made a note that I was like, this seems like a hard thing to enforce.
Some people have whole window sections of, you know, how you do windows too.
That would show later.
That gets complicated too. Um.
So if you had a question.
Yes, I, I have a question. I just want to make sure I have clear direction for what to draft for you next time. Um, so for next time, I'll create an exemption section. I should draft some regulations around illumination and electronic signs, yes or no?
Illumination of electronic signs.
Illumination and electronic signs. And provide a, a PowerPoint so you can have some thoughts on that.
You're going to be getting to that at the next, uh, yes, you probably should go and. Yeah, you might as well go ahead and do that if you could. The exemptions. I think exemptions should come in early in this.
So, yeah, so because the way I drafted this was just to take what you already had.
Yeah.
With only the modification it heard, but I'd like to be able to. Do a lot more work for you guys to just look at and move with. Um, so you have everything you need from me. So I can make some of the adjustments that I heard talked about tonight to this and then add those sections and provide you with the PowerPoint. So that you're in a better place. Does that, is that agreement of the commission that you want me to do that?
Uh, you have, so if we do an exempt, uh, section, we have a prohibited signs section.
Yeah.
Uh, do we want a temporary sign section? Is there a sign ordinances have those as well?
Break it out from.
Break it out even.
From the general.
Deliniate it even further to make it, in my opinion, a little more simple, simple to look at, read. What do you think, everybody?
Well, I do think saying that, sorry, I'm not.
No, go ahead.
But I, I like the idea of putting the, um, exempt kind of first because it's kind of like, oh, good.
Yeah.
You know, you don't have to go through slog through so much to find, it, it just, I like that.
And then prohibited is usually right behind that, so, so you can act, oh, I'm not, I forget it, I can't even do that. Uh, temporary comes in pretty close to that as well because a lot of people just want to have a weekend sign or whatever, yard sale, and they want to go through and they want to see that quickly as well. So I am for actually delineating out the temporary signage as well. What do y'all think about that? Agreed on that too? Yeah, why not? He chooses, why not?
Anything that makes it clearer.
We want to make this as simple for everyday Joes to read. That's, I think, what I think our point is.
So I have permission to do more wordsmithing to achieve that goal and provide those.
Oh, absolutely. You don't have to use our, this is from like a lot of years ago, so let's not worry about that. So go ahead and do what is, it is you need to do.
All right, will do.
Um, I appreciate that. Thank you. Um. Madam Clerk, do you have any questions about what we've just done? Nope, she's saying, I don't have to worry about her at all. The next thing, okay, let's go on then. So the, the next month we, we meet, we're going to probably look at exempt signs and possibly we'll get to, you know, a couple other pages maybe if we're lucky and maybe some of your slideshow that you're going to bring forward. Now we're going to go on to number eight, which is comments by commissioners. And this is a time, Commissioner Smith, that I like to go through and ask everybody if they have an issue or they have a concern or, you know, uh, last time we met, Commissioner Brown brought up the idea he had an agenda item he wanted to bring forward. So I want to start, let's just start, Commissioner Hahn, what do you have for us tonight?
Anything? I have two items that I would like to bring up.
Go for it.
With this wonderful weather that we have, um, it really impacts Richfield Station in the back section with the, um, the roads. It's almost a safety hazard because the, when they try to, um, plow it, it's, they can't because it's not flat because the developer has not finished the roads. So I would really appreciate if town council or whoever could really, um, maybe go with the contractor and ride back there to actually see what it's like. Because there is a Richfield Station Facebook page and the people in the back are always upset because there's an issue when they try to plow it. Because it's not a flat plow because it's not a flat road. There's all kinds of things sticking up, which I don't know the terminology for, but every time that there's snow, there's a safety issue back there.
I actually, at the town council meeting, heard somebody talking about that issue. So I do know that they are looking into that. I can't say for sure, but I think I've, do you know anything about that? That's what I thought, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you for bringing that up.
So then my next one is the water bill. So for myself, I'm just going to use myself, in my residence in Richfield Station, I have two people in there and I went from the previous quarter, from June through September, having a usage of four thousand gallons of water. That's what I was charged for. This quarter, I was charged for eight thousand gallons of water and in this quarter, instead of having two people in the house one month, there was only one person. So I know I don't have a running toilet. I know there's not something, so I would like to request potentially an audit or something because I'm concerned with the numbers. Historically, my numbers are between four and five, maybe six thousand if I have visitors or somebody visiting or something like this. Never eight thousand. So I, I understand everybody else's concern and now that I see it on mine, because I've never had eight thousand, um, I would just like to request possibly having a third-party audit come in and audit what was installed in these systems in our houses and just see if there's possibly something that we can really find out why we're having high levels of water.
I know everybody's.
I, I thought, yeah, I thought there was, I thought I read in the town newsletter or something just today that they were calling for an independent third-party audit of, of something with the water, so.
They are.
Yeah, this is so on trend.
She's got, well.
You should see. His Facebook page. And, and I will say to them, okay, I will bring this up at the planning and zoning meeting. And they were like, please, and they started giving me information.
There is an audit going forward and I know there, uh, uh, Mayor Wall is addressing the issue as we're speaking, so. Talking about it. So I think you're going to be hearing him more about it in the next few months, but it's taking a lot of time to go through all this process. He was talking about even refunds. He was talking about a lot of things going down. I don't know if he'll get a refund, but I know he's going to address the jump of, uh, the usage and the costs. I know he's addressing that. I can't guarantee anything. We're going to see what happens. Um, is that it?
It is. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And Commissioner Smith?
Um, at this time, I do not have any comments, uh, this being my first time, but I'll be, I'll be sure to have some the next time, so.
Make it up.
Skew, what do you think about your first meeting here tonight?
You know, some people may think this is boring, but I actually enjoy this. So the meticulous details of everything that goes into it, yeah.
Detail, Korean in place. So if you like detail, this is it.
I love, I love boring stuff, so, yeah, that's, yeah.
Speak to your personality, it just.
No, no, yeah.
Good, that's good.
Yeah.
No, I have nothing. I haven't spoken.
Say, do you?
Already spoken. Okay. Take no further questions, no comments.
And I don't have any comments either. I thank everybody for, um, for participating in this tedious. And I don't have any comments either. I thank everybody for, for participating in this tedious subject, but we need to get it done. So our next meeting is going.
We're going to finish this next meeting and, and in March, we're going to have a public hearing.
I'm not sure we're going to finish for a few months. We're probably not going to have our public hearing. I know.
Oh, it's not my optimism, it's what, yeah.
Hoping by, you know, springtime, we're going to be able to get this accomplished and then have. I mean, we, I told the town council, I was hoping to get it done by, I think, March or April. I, I'm thinking it could be, well, it could be April that we have our public hearing.
The rate we're going?
Maybe you'll love what I draft for next time and have no changes and, and we'll just go for it.
It might go quicker.
I mean, you know, it might go a little faster.
He's going to sort of now take, you know, the.
You're going to take the bull by the horns and really.
I hope so.
It's going to be fine. Um, and so our next meeting, and I am looking at, the next meeting is going to be February 19th. So unless, I, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
I'm sorry, it's February 26th?
Yes.
Oh, you're not going to be here. Okay, and I have 19th. Okay, I'm glad you said something, so I have the wrong date for myself. 26, okay, I'm glad you said something about that, so we will adjourn to February 26th. You're not going to be here, I'm sorry to see that. And we have a motion to adjourn, we have a second, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much. No, 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 that's good. This is going to, you know, this is a really tough subject, so we really need to put it in when we need it. Thank you for all of your input. Appreciate all of it.